Okay, so you have Caitlin and Jack here?
I wonder if they knew.
Well, did anybody tell them?
Oh, I think they're over at Central Office.
Alright, well then we will get right into a Sargent School student presentation.
Yeah, text them. Can you hear me okay? Okay. Perfect, make sure that you can hear all the students coming. So, thank you for having us tonight. We are here to share with you some of the great work that our library media specialists have done across our elementary schools and Bradstreet. We have had a lot of different processes in the last five years and expansions with our library media specialists, including going all the way up from one to three. So, they've been hard at work in lots of different areas. We really have a future-ready library model, which includes a few different aspects. One is not only the literacy in the books that you can imagine, but also digital literacy tools and resources for our librarians. They are really doing a great job of building relationships outside of the schools, and they'll talk a little bit about that work with Stevens Memorial, and we've worked with some of the librarians at Merrimack College. They are also doing a fantastic job of facilitating professional learning for our staff members and really expanding to our teachers and our staff across the schools. And then most of all, what you'll see tonight is empowering students to be creators. So, we have been fortunate enough to receive a $2,000 STEM mini-grant from the Northeast STEM Network, and it's a regional grant, and part of that grant, we had to collaborate with outside institutions, so we partnered with Stevens Memorial and Merrimack College, and that has really expanded our partnerships with them. And you'll see tonight, a lot of the tools that we purchased with those, the grant money, are under the library media curriculum umbrella, has fallen the digital literacy and the computer science standards. So, the last few years, we've done code.org activities online, and we've expanded to some more hands-on materials for students. So, we have a number of students that are going to come up and show you a couple of different pieces. Some are going to be programming onsite, so they're with them, they're going to do a fantastic job. So, I'm going to turn it over to Courtney Ahern, who's going to introduce them.
Hi, I'm Courtney Ahern, I'm the library media specialist for both Sargent and Thompson. We've been doing a lot of STEM activities with these, a couple of these tools that you're going to see tonight. One thing that I wanted to mention before the students start showing off all that they know, is that we worked really closely with Charlotte Aradano and the Stevens Memorial Library. They also won a STEM grant very recently, and so we worked in collaboration with the Stevens Library in order to purchase items that would kind of supplement the STEM tools and toys that they were purchasing at the library, with the specific goal of being able to see what was working, what was popular, what didn't circulate, or what wasn't very popular with kids, and then that way we could kind of share all of our resources, which was kind of a huge aspect of the grant. So, yeah, so tonight we have Jack, Julia, Xavier, Ben, Lexi, Isabella, and Tucker, and they are each going to show you a little bit about what they've been learning with the STEM tools.
We have, we have to code the mouse, and first, we were coding it wrong because we were trying to restart it with this button that actually just, that made it just go to the side, and then we realized that we had to use the yellow button, and then realized that we had to code it this way.
What do you guys cheese?
And then, we were doing that a lot, and then we finally figured out how to do that way. And then for our second thing, we had this, where we had to connect this to the battery. And then, at first, we tried to put it together with the fans, one was in the middle, in the button.
And the button was on the end.
Was on the end. We could only turn it on using this switch.
And then, once we moved the...
Once we moved the button in the middle. And press the button. And then, after, we tried to put it, well, sometimes we tried to put it in differently, and it wouldn't work because it was the wrong way, and the magnets weren't facing the right way, but then at the end, we got it.
Awesome.
And...
So, how does it connect to what you've seen on the science ones?
With the magnets.
With the magnets.
That makes it connect together.
It makes it connect. Circus.
Yep. And do you remember that big fancy word that Mrs. Ahern has talked to you about? The robots?
Algorithm.
That's an algorithm.
What's the big fancy word?
Strategy.
Strategy.
Great.
Very good.
Awesome, great job.
It's tough to be first, huh?
I don't know, she never spoke today.
That one's big.
What is it? This is the tower that we made of magnet tiles, like things that had magnets on the ends, so then we built a tower out of them. It was three stories high, it was beginning floor, or whatever, then the middle, and then the attic. And then the attic, you can see, you know, it's starting, or whatever. Okay, the bridge, we all worked together on, we like came up with a bunch of different ideas in how we were going to do it, and then we finally agreed on this way, so then we could just roll the ball through each lane, and it went pretty well, and then we just added the sides for decoration.
Nice.
Well, and for security, in case it just came all the way to the side.
Okay.
Do you remind your bridge, but what atmosphere was your bridge?
It would probably be like above the water, if there was something underneath this all.
I guess it could be an underground bridge.
Why did you, as I say, why did you decide to do it that way? You said you started a different way, and you chose that way, why did you decide to do that way?
Because the other ways, they were falling a lot, or it just, the ball wouldn't roll through.
How long did it take, you folks, to complete this? And what was it like working together, rather than alone on a project?
Um, it took around maybe 10 to 15 minutes.
For each one?
Uh, yeah.
And how was it working together?
We all had to help, like, one of us would probably come up with designs, Tucker came with the designs, and then one of us got the pieces, and then we just started building together.
Great. Awesome.
How come you were chosen to speak?
I don't know. They didn't want to.
Well, you did a great job.
So, these are the Bitbots, and they come with markers, like special markers, and then we drew our own tracks, and there were instructions, so we could make like special moves that it could do. Like, this is the fast one, this is the Nitro Boost, and then this is the tornado, and then the Nitro Boost. And the button is right here. So, that's my track.
So, mine, I tried to get it to go in a continuous loop, but it just seems to either drive off or not do anything.
You said those are just markers, not any kind of like tape or anything?
Nope, just regular markers.
Cool.
It does that at the end.
That's awesome.
Yeah, great job.
So, we had troubles with getting them to do the color combinations.
Yeah, because we did them way too long, and then, I don't know what happened with this one, kind of just went crazy. And then this was one that actually worked.
Did it?
Yeah.
Do the different colors do anything for the tracks?
Uh, yeah.
The colors of the markers.
The bits have little cameras on the bottom, that can sense the color, and color, different color codes, they make them into different tones.
Do the different color codes, like, did I just see a turbo boost at the end there?
Yeah.
So, what color made it go faster?
A combination of...
It's the combinations.
We would be green, red, and orange.
And what adjustments did you have to make from trying to do the continuous circle?
Well, one of our problems at the beginning was that...
It's going on!
Was we made the lines too big, and apparently you can't sense that, so we need a smaller than that.
It usually just turns or runs off.
What makes it spin in a circle? What colors do that?
It does it on its own.
No, there is a color code for it, but this is what I mean, like mine, it'll stop.
There he goes, yeah, right there.
In the same spot.
Yeah.
It spins, but then it goes around, and then...
That's a tornado.
And then it spins again.
And then it runs off.
That's cool.
Could you just hold them up, like it's hard to see, no, the papers, the designs? Ah, that's it, okay, I couldn't see the different colors from this angle. Okay, that makes sense more, alright, very cool.
What about that green swirly line over there?
That was a fail.
Why do you think it failed?
I think the camera couldn't figure out, yeah, like it was too curvy, so the camera didn't have enough marker to find.
That makes sense.
And I wanted to see if it could turn, so it did. I had problems with this part.
Good experiments, though.
So, do you feel like you learned something from the failures?
Uh, kind of.
Do you think you learned more from failures or successes?
Successes.
They're more fun, anyway.
Yeah.
Awesome.
Very nice.
Thank you.
Nice, great work.
Thank you, guys. So, these are just some of the equipment that we purchased with the grant. We also have brain blocks, which are similar to the Kiva planks that were used to build the bridge. We also made sure that every school had a green screen. We have ours at Sargent painted on the wall over there, and then all of the other schools have a portable green screen, and we've started to do a lot more teacher collaborations with the green screen, doing different projects, and it's just a wonderful way of kind of enhancing what's already happening in the classroom. I know, for example, here at Sargent, fifth grade class last year, they were already doing a project on biographies, and their teacher wanted them to do a quick summary, and we made it look as if they were the actual people they were writing about in their, you know, environment, so that was really, really cool. But we've also been doing a lot of other STEM work with some of the other tools that are available to us, and my colleagues, Liz Sinclair Fisher and Dale Osborne, are going to speak more to those.
Liz?
Thank you. So, I'm Liz Sinclair Fisher, librarian at the Bradstreet School and at Atkinson, and this year has also, besides all of our wonderful STEM tools, seen an increase in Chromebook usage across all six schools, yes, including our new kindergarten building, where we have all signed in and gotten familiar with some of the computer, computer use already. But part of that expanded computer use has been in part due to the Bradstreet expansion itself. Atkinson's library space last year did not have space for tables and chairs, and so when we moved into a larger location this year, we were able to have tables and chairs to have more consistent computer use, and that Chromebook time has already shown increases in students' comfort level across all of the logging in and all of the math and typing and writing that we've been doing throughout the year, which has been really wonderful on top of all of the STEM tools that we've been experimenting with.
So, I'm going to speak to some of the other technology that we've been using in the classrooms. I'm Dale Osborne, and I'm the librarian at the Kittredge School and at Franklin School. And Kittredge as well, got tables and chairs this year and a larger space, so that was really exciting. And the Kittredge Library was, is one of the schools, or the Kittredge School is one of the schools that's using ST Math. So, on the days when I am not there, the students use the library space and use the Chromebooks that are in the library to do their ST Math work. All of the students are using Google Classroom, and I'm gradually getting them to use various aspects of the Google Suite. So, we're using Google Docs, Google Sheets. I've been doing a travel project with fourth and fifth graders, where they plan a trip to anywhere in the United States on a budget, and they have to track that budget in a spreadsheet. I've taught them how to have the computer do the math for them, because like me, I can be a little scared of math, lots of kids are scared of math, but the wonderful thing about using Excel or Google Sheets is the computer can do the math for you. They're also learning how to do charts and graphs, and how to transfer those charts and graphs into another document, like a Word document or a spread of Google Slides. So, that's what we've been doing with that.
This is fantastic, I mean, I think we've heard, you know, a little bit about kind of what you guys are doing, and, but to see the students come up and do it, and kind of actually applying it is really great, so awesome job, really, really, it's tough sometimes to be out late and present out, but super job, thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you all.
Could you remind us what grade they are again?
Fourth grade.
Fourth grade, wow.
And how much time during the week did they get to spend on this?
So, we've been rolling this out for the last, you know, ever since the end of winter break, so you guys have only used it a couple of times so far, but I'm hoping to integrate it more. We've also seen a lot more teachers taking advantage of the fact that these tools are available. I just finished a collaboration with the first grade class at Thompson, where we used the Bitrobots and the Kiva Planks and brain blocks to create a maze for a character that they had read in a book to kind of move through. So, we're hoping that not only are we going to be using them in the library lessons and in the libraries themselves, but that teachers will feel that these are tools that they're able to use to help their students demonstrate their learning for different projects. So, it's the first of many, or the beginning of many STEM days in the libraries.
It sounds like the new Bradstreet has allowed for some, much more space to have the ability to do this.
Absolutely.
And that's, that's pretty common across all the elementaries?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, definitely. I know that, that space expansion has just allowed us to have a little bit more room to breathe, and so having that consistent space at Atkinson, for example, has allowed us to have more frequent Chromebook use as well as use of the STEM tools, because there's a dedicated location that they can go and use them, it doesn't all have to be taking place in the classroom, they can, we've also had split classes, so we have a half come to the library to do a library lesson, half stay in the classroom to do STEM tools, just having that space. And to the previous question at the new Bradstreet School, we have had, we have a set of Kiva planks and of the magnet tiles that have been checked out by kindergarten teachers and brought into the classroom pretty frequently as kind of additional enrichment throughout the classroom day.
I'd also like to speak to that, as the librarian at the Kittredge School. Another thing that having the space has done for us is for the younger grades that don't have Chromebook carts in their classroom, where the library has a Chromebook cart, but getting the Chromebook cart to an upper level during the school day is a challenge. When I'm not at the Kittredge School, if first or second grade needs to use the Chromebooks for anything, start research or whatever, they sign up to use the library for a certain amount of time, and they go right down to the library, and they're able to use the Chromebooks that are housed in the library.
Oh, go ahead.
Sorry, do the students do any sort of engineering notebook as part of the use of technology?
Not yet. Many of our teachers do, and this is where, again, trying to make a good bridge between what's happening in the libraries and in the classrooms. We've been trying out some different science resources, some teachers will use some digital notebooks for record-keeping and journaling, where working on, that's been my rotation with collaboration this round, is working with all of the grade levels on some different science tools and going in in different science lessons for next year, and trying them out this year. So, it is, it's coming, we're kind of building what that consistency looks like with the new writing and math and reading going in, it's been one of the many things that our classroom teachers have on their plate, so we're taking it little by little, they've been really energized and very enthusiastic, I think some of the science lessons, we've been using mystery science, and it's been, been really great. So, we'll see what that common thread is moving forward, but I think this will really enable us to bring more engineering and technology into the classroom. I was just at Merrimack College the other day, and they're building a digital literacy, computer science, and Courtney came with me to help them figure out what that curriculum is, to have a certification program. So, we're really seeing a trend in elementary, using it in different ways, we don't have tech specialists, they don't have computer, you know, lab time, that it's really our three dedicated folks you see up here that are helping to create that, so we have a good combination, and are, and getting more, the engineering standards are really more embedded within all grade levels, one through five, I think in the past it was more that fifth grade, simple machine project that students knew and loved, but now it's really, we're seeing more of that connection, and a lot of connection with literacy, there's a lot of the trend to engineering with literacy stories, so as Courtney mentioned, that, you know, reading that, the story, and then building a design that connects it in. So, it's been great.
Well, I'm really thrilled that we have the librarians out tonight, I appreciate it, I know it's an extra night out, and Ms. Lockum, and the support of Ms. O'Loughlin and Ms. Leahy, but most importantly, our fourth graders here at Sargent were just tremendous. And your parents or caretakers must be very proud of you. Awesome job. Raise your hand, how many was, how many of you, for you, was this your first time on TV? Alright, nice work.
Nice job, thanks for coming.
Thank you for coming. Terrific.
Thank you, everyone.
Polly, did you see Caitlin?
Alright, I'd like to welcome Caitlin up to give us the student report now. Caitlin, I hope you didn't go to Central Office.
I did, I realized what was wrong, and I got there, and I was like, right, there was a sorry. So, sorry I'm late, that's my bad.
Not at all.
Jack's still there?
No, Jack didn't come, so it was just my mistake.
I sent you a message, so I don't know if that, you can delete when you get home.
It's going to the TV.
Yeah, it's on.
You're great.
Um, so, yeah, so...
Oh, sorry, you do have to turn it on.
Sorry. The red button? Should I stop holding?
Shouldn't she release it?
I can talk loud if that's...
It's for the TV view, right? All six of them.
So, yeah, sorry I'm late.
No problem.
So, obviously, we had break last week, which was very nice, I know, like, I was able to visit like some of the colleges I'm considering, and I know that probably a lot of the upperclassmen did as well, so I think it was just a really nice time to just kind of get ready for the end of the trimester. It was also nice today to have that two-hour delay, I will say. I was hoping for more snow, so we'd have a snow day, that was actually caused by snow, but I will take a delay any day.
So are my kids.
So are mine.
So then, we actually have a pretty good amount of events coming up in the next little bit, I know that tomorrow, we have the Young Woman's Career Day, and I know a friend of mine, Caitlin Parks, was one of the people that helped set it up, so she's very excited about it, and I don't know if you guys know, but basically, for the first two periods of the school day from eight to 10 o'clock, some career, some women in different careers are going to be coming in, I believe it's 20 from the Merrimack Valley are coming in, and they're going to just be talking and doing like a panel for the juniors and the seniors to ask questions, that way hopefully people can kind of get an idea of what career path they want to go, or for us seniors, we can kind of try to figure out how we want to spend our time in college, so, and I believe the way it's working is you talk to your teacher, and then there will be a sign-in at the event in the cafeteria, so that you sign in when you get there, and then they'll mark your absent excuse, so that way, you know, if you're interested in going, you don't have to worry about the fact that it will be like an absence from class, because it will count as excused, and I do also know that if you can't make it during first period, like I know I have stats, and I am very nervous if I were to miss that, so I'll be going during my second period most likely, and they said that's totally fine, because you can still be signed in and get excused. Also tomorrow, Drama Fest, which is the competition that the Drama Guild participates in, is going to be having their preview of their show, they're actually having two, one at 3:30 and one at 7:00, and it's free to attend, obviously, like donations are appreciated, but I definitely would recommend going, they're normally, the plays have to be about 40 minutes in order to participate in the competition, so it's not a huge amount of time, and I think that it should be very good, I know a few of my friends are in it, and they are very excited about it, and obviously nervous, because it's a competition, but...
So, these are plays they've written themselves?
No, so it's an actual play that they put on. So, it's basically a festival of short, 40-minute plays, so. And then also, next week, we have the juniors are going to DC, I know that Jack is going, so I'm pretty sure he's excited, he's probably packing as well as studying tonight. I also know that, like, Student Council and me personally, at the end of next week, are going to our annual Massachusetts Association of Student Council's conference for three days, which should be very exciting. I know that I am personally excited to move on to trimester three, so I'm glad that, I'm glad that the time has come. And then lastly, I know that on March 13th, the Youth Center is having their teen job fair. I've seen posters all over school, and I remember I actually went my freshman year, and that's how I got my job at Mad Maggie's that I'm still at right now. So definitely worth it if you have kids that want to get a job or you want your kids to get a job. Definitely worth it to stop by. But, yeah.
And when is Mr. North Andover?
Mr. North Andover is the week after finals, so I have the date, but it's not...
Friday the 15th.
Yeah, we'll have the next school committee meeting. It'll be the next day.
Good.
The Ides of March.
Beware.
Great.
Awesome.
Thank you, Caitlin.
Thank you, Caitlin.
Now, will it, like, freak out or...
I don't know.
Last week for the data.
Thank you, Caitlin.
Good luck on your finals.
That's right.
Thanks.
All right, time for the consent agenda and approval of minutes from February 14th.
So I'll move that we approve the minutes for the February 14th, 2019, meeting as presented in the packet.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. McDevitt, seconded by Ms. Picard. Mr. Treese, any discussion? Nope. Okay, Mr. Treese?
Aye.
Aye.
And aye.
And aye. And now for our superintendent's report.
Great. Tonight I'd like to report out just a small report on snow days. You know, we've been fortunate so far to have a very light winter in terms of snow.
Jinx it.
But I want folks to know at home, a couple of things. We typically like to make the decision by 5:30, and that's been our protocol for a long time. But the most important thing is, number one, safety. Can we safely get the students to the school? And then number two, we take it into consideration, we have a lot of working parents in North Andover, two, two working parents. We realize that's a challenge. So if we can safely get students to school and the buses can run and we get confirmation, public safety, as well as the DPW, we'll have school. Couple reminders, you can always check Twitter first. It's, you don't have to be on Twitter, it's on the front page of the district website. And oftentimes, you will get, see it scrolling across the top. You can check Channel 99 if you have Comcast, and it might be 28 for Verizon.
Yes.
If you have Verizon. Additionally, Mr. Mealy and Ms. Marks post on all the channels across Boston. And last but not least, typically I'll send out an email, if possible, to the parents as, right around the time I do a staff call, but I do not send out the actual phone call till 5:55, and that's been pretty much our practice for a long time now. We used to send it a little bit earlier if we knew. But, having said that, when we did that, we got a lot of complaints from parents that it was way too early. So there's a lot of other options to check before they get that call. And if there's ever an opportunity that we can make a call the night before so that parents can plan or prepare, we'd certainly do that. But this winter, we've had some really tricky forecasts that really haven't added up much to the claims on some of the weather stations. So, for example, last night we were one to three for three days straight up until 5:00 PM, and then all of a sudden I looked and it says three to five. So, but safety is always the top priority, and I just wanted to give an update on that and spread the word. You can always check the front page of the website, and today I think I posted it 4:57, so...
Yeah, I checked at 5:15 and saw it was already...
So that's my, I'll yield the rest of my time.
All right. For our chair's report, my chair's report tonight, we just have an announcement that the North Andover Merchants Association, along with the Youth Center, is hosting the first annual North Andover Junior Merchants Expo. This allows for kids to sell their own homemade crafts or artwork and kind of be entrepreneurs and promote their own business service. It is open, but not limited to musicians, lawn care service, computer experts, photography services, and bakers. So if you are interested, the event is April 6th, 9 to 12, at the Youth Center, and you can contact Sally Finnemore at finnemore, F-I-N-N-I-M-O-R-E, at Verizon.net, and it's open to all children in grades four to 12 who live in town. It just has to be original artwork. All right, and for old business, we have the second reading of the approval of the MSBA Statement of Interest.
Mr. Mealy, please.
Yeah, I have the easy part. This is, the third year we're going to be applying to the MSBA for a possible middle school renovation. Would include, right now it's preliminary, but possibly a science wing. But what we have to do in the Board of Selectmen did this Monday night, approved it, is read this entire statement and then approve it.
You're on. I'm on. So, the only thought that I have is, I've read this twice now and we haven't been approved twice.
Oh, someone else should read it?
Yeah. Okay, so, so what am I doing? I move that we approve the following resolution? Is that how it asked? Okay, I just want to make sure I read the right thing. All right, so I move that we approve the following resolution. Resolved, having convened an open meeting on February 28th, 2019, the School Committee of the Town of North Andover, in accordance with its charter, bylaws, and ordinances, has voted to authorize the superintendent to submit to the Massachusetts School Building Authority the Statement of Interest dated April 12th, 2019, for the North Andover Middle School located at 495 Main Street, North Andover, which describes and explains the following deficiencies and the priority categories for which the Town of North Andover may be invited to apply to the Massachusetts School Building Authority in the future for priority number two. Elimination of the existing severe overcrowding as determined in the judgment of the authority, specifically to decrease class size from a current average of 24.6 students, and hereby further specifically acknowledges that by submitting the Statement of Interest, the Massachusetts School Building Authority in no way guarantees the acceptance or the approval of an application, the awarding of a grant, or any other funding commitment from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, or commits the town, city, regional school district to filing an application for funding with the Massachusetts School Building Authority. In addition, the School Committee of the Town of North Andover confirms the following criteria applied to the request. The school facility has been and will remain in use as a public K-12 school, serving the public school students for the useful life of any addition new construction. The school facility has sufficient spaces to deliver its required educational programs, except for the lack of space to allow for the decrease of existing class sizes. The school facility is structurally, functionally, and educationally sound and has no other deficiencies, and all other building systems are operational, safe, and adequate for the delivery of required educational programs. The need for additional space is not the result of neglect or lack of routine or capital maintenance by the district. The district acknowledges and agrees to abide by all federal and state law and rules, regulations, policies, and guidelines of the MSBA, and the district agrees to use the MSBA's pre-qualified OPMs and designers. The district has the ability to raise the contribution, the local contribution required to fund the district share of the project in a timely manner, and the district has no entitlement to funds and the awarding of a grant, grants, if any, is at the sole discretion of the MSBA.
Nicely done.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. McDevitt, second by Ms. Picard. Mr. Treese?
Aye.
Mr. McDevitt?
Aye.
Aye.
And aye. So we will submit that. Okay, last meeting, this committee approved the school calendar as it was written and decided to table the discussion on including Indigenous Peoples' Day on the school calendar along with Columbus Day for further discussion, which is going to happen now. So, Ms. Picard, would you like to start?
I will be happy to start. So, as you know, a group of citizens approached the Board of Selectmen last summer, and a number of people brought forth information about why it was important to them for the Town of North Andover to recognize Indigenous Peoples' Day. And it included, of course, our history of Indigenous Peoples that lived in this, in this area before English settlers arrived, but also those who have Indigenous history in their own families, those of French-Canadian background, those of, you know, all sorts of different backgrounds, you know, stood up and spoke to why they thought it was important. This was approved by the Board of Selectmen in a 5-0 vote last summer, and we brought it, I brought it to this committee to include on the school calendar during this process this year.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Just a process question, Madam Chair. So, are you considering this to be like a public hearing on it? Is this the first reading of it? And are we going to vote again as a second reading next time? Or what's the process going to be, I guess?
I thought this was just a discussion per other requests last week. I don't think we need a public hearing on it, so we can feel free to vote on it tonight. I don't...
Well, I think we'll have the same conversation as we had two weeks ago.
Right.
I was worried that, because I think I told you I'm not going to be here next week, so I was worried that I wasn't going to be for the vote. So either way, you know, I respect what Ms. Picard said. I have not seen anyone come to our, our school committees yet of any, there's a few people that have shown up. There's not been a massive outcry to do this. I was, I was not at the Selectmen's meeting, obviously, last summer when, you know, you said there were people who wanted to change this. I guess my, my feeling is, like, why not have your own holiday? And I said this last week, I'll say it again. I mean, Columbus Day has become an Italian-American holiday over the years, and to me, this is a nationwide movement to try to, you know, just get rid of Columbus Day. I don't think this is just a, let's just share the holiday type of thing. And if we really want to celebrate Indigenous Peoples' Day, why don't we just, you know, have their own holiday? What's the, what's the harm in that? I know the school calendar, you know, maybe we could find a day that, to celebrate that. And I don't think just naming a holiday celebrates Indigenous Peoples. I think if you want to have classroom discussions, or projects, or, you know, classes about it, that's the way to celebrate it. But I don't think the way you celebrate is to really take a holiday that is based on the Italian-American holiday. I just don't see how that celebrates, you're celebrating one culture at the expense of another. So I'm against this. I'm against what the Selectmen did last time, and I don't think this is just a, a movement to, to celebrate Indigenous Peoples' Day. I think it's a, it's a movement to give rid of Columbus Day.
Any other discussion?
So, I guess I'm just asking, so you expect us to, like, to make a motion to, or Ms. Picard make a motion to name the second Monday in October, Columbus Day, Indigenous Peoples' Day? Is that what's on the floor? Is that on the floor right now, or...
Yes.
Well, I guess I would ask, ask Ms. Picard, I mean, we have, I don't know what the day is, we have off the top of my head, but I know Election Day every year, we don't school that day. Why can't we have that be Indigenous Peoples' Day?
So, my answer to that, and I think that the, the people who have spoken about this before, is that there is, in fact, an international movement to have Indigenous Peoples' Day recognized the second Monday in October. And so we're not making up a holiday, we're not making up a new date, we're using a date that's being recognized internationally. It's been recognized by a number of communities in Massachusetts and recognized by a number of states in the United States, been recognized by a number of countries. So we're not making something up, we're simply including that language and that information in our school calendar as well as recognizing as a, as a Town of North Andover.
But you would agree, some of this movement, though, is to take away Columbus Day. It's not, I see, this, the proclamation that the Selectmen did is a compromised thing. There are some communities that have got rid of Columbus Day, period.
There are communities that have done that, but we're North Andover, and we're doing what North Andover can do, and we're doing what's within the, the desire and the authority of those who have voted on this before and who have brought it forward to us here.
Well, like I said last week, or two weeks ago, I, I think it's, you know, just trying to revise history, and it, it, it's not just about Indigenous Peoples' Day, it's about taking away Columbus Day. And I think everyone who's going to vote on this should know that. It's, you're taking away Columbus Day. So, I think we've, Helen and I have gone back and forth for three sessions now, I don't think we need to beat it to death anymore, but I'm dead set against it. I think, I think it's a mistake.
Don't the children still learn both? Is it...
I don't think, I don't think it's about learning that, because I think obviously people in school are learning with Indigenous Peoples and what the contributions they've made to our country, our land, our, our community, as Helen has said. I don't think that's at all. I think you're taking away something that is, is celebrated, you know, and it's not just Columbus. It's not, you know, I know Indigenous Peoples, the movement behind Indigenous Peoples' Day is to, you know, focus on all the atrocities that Columbus committed over the years. They focus on that. And while the Italian-Americans don't just focus on Columbus, they focus on a lot of other great Italian-Americans. And obviously, you know, I'm Italian-American, my, my grandparents came here, you know, 100 years ago, and I'm proud of our heritage, I'm proud of what they've done, I'm proud of other Italian-Americans. And I think that's what you're doing here. You, you're diminishing, diminishing this, and I think you could actually send a message to the Indigenous Peoples' Movement that we should focus on celebrating them by not taking down somebody else. And I think that's exactly what you're doing here, Helen. So when the vote comes, I'm going to vote no.
Is there any further discussion?
I guess part of it, this proclamation sitting here, that the town has already proclaimed that the second Monday, October, shall be recognized as Indigenous Peoples' Day. So that's, so then you'd be introducing yet another opportunity or other holiday. It's, the town calendar already has it written in. I don't see it as, I would never be voting to take away Columbus Day. It's just adding this as another thing.
Well, the, the pushback I give on that is, you know, in, in duck, to be too tangential, but in politics, you know, to get something done, a lot of times, you know, you try to create this ground well of support. I mean, if you look at, you know, in recent history, like, you know, gay marriage, for example, you know, that was done all at the state level first. I mean, the, the people who wanted to have gay marriage in the country, which I was one of, by the way, you know, they, they start at the state level, and they pick states that they thought they'd be friendly in, and eventually get critical mass, and now gay marriage is allowed in the entire country. This is the same thing that's going to happen here. They're going to get a bunch of communities, and most of the communities that they picked to start with are very liberal communities to start with, and eventually they're going to take, go to the state and say, hey, listen, all these communities want to get rid of Columbus Day. And this is how it starts. I mean, the same thing's going on with the marijuana movement, the legalization of marijuana. That's, that's the exact same political process or scheme that, that takes place to get a lot of things done. I'm not saying it's right or wrong, but have no illusions. That's what this is about.
But that's not what's on the table today.
Well, you're voting, yeah, you're voting for Columbus Day slash Indigenous Peoples' Day, you know?
I'm voting to add to the calendar what's already been proclaimed.
By, by the Selectmen, by, by the Selectmen. You're, you're elected in your own right, as I am, as Helen, as we all are. Just because the Selectmen did it doesn't mean we have to do it. But obviously, we can vote where they want to vote.
I think it would be worthy to note that the Selectmen proclamation, in the second to last paragraph, does say, be it further resolved, the Town of North Andover encourages other businesses, organizations, and public entities to recognize Indigenous Peoples' Day in conjunction with Columbus Day. So that's, that's what this is about.
We beat it to death already.
Is there a motion?
Oh, right.
Your, your mic.
I would move that we amend the school calendar to include Indigenous Peoples' Day on the second Monday of October, as reflected by the town proclamation and the town calendar. Second.
But that's not what's on the table today.
Well, you're voting, yeah, you're voting for Columbus Day slash Indigenous Peoples' Day, you know?
I'm voting to add to the calendar what's already been proclaimed.
By the Selectmen, by the Selectmen. You were elected in your own right, as I am, as Helen, as we all are. Just because the Selectmen did it, doesn't mean we have to do it. But obviously, we can vote where they want to vote.
I think it would be worthy to note that the Selectmen proclamation, in the second to last paragraph, does say, "Be it further resolved, the town of North Andover encourages other businesses, organizations, and public entities to recognize Indigenous Peoples' Day in conjunction with Columbus Day." So, that's what this is about.
We beat it to death already.
Is there a motion?
Oh, right.
Your mic.
I would move that we amend the school calendar to include Indigenous Peoples' Day on the second Monday of October, as reflected by the town proclamation and the town calendar.
Second?
Motion made by Ms. Picard, second by Ms. Mably. Mr. Turisi?
No.
Mr. McDevitt?
Yes.
Ms. Picard?
Yes.
Ms. Mably?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. So, carries four to one. All right, new business. I will turn it back over to our esteemed superintendent to give a brief, he promised brief, discussion of the mid-cycle evaluation.
Is that in the evaluation, the brief part?
Bev did, said I was starting to put too much evidence in at this time.
Okay.
It's only mid-cycle.
Listen to Bev. Listen to Bev.
So, actually, I just want to highlight a couple of things. First and foremost, I'm very thankful to have a board that works well together and is very supportive of myself and my team. It makes the job much better when we all work in concert with each other to do what's best for the kids in North Andover, and I want to recognize you for that. Secondly, my team in central office, and not just these three, but others, is just remarkable. It's second to none. Not only are they experts in different areas, but they're hardworking, loyal, always do what's right for kids. And oftentimes, they're doing things outside of their typical job description. And I appreciate it, particularly as a first-year superintendent. It's very important. And one thing before I just highlight a couple pieces, you know, as one of the 45 rookie superintendents in the Commonwealth this year, it's the biggest cohort of new superintendent school folks in a long time. The motto of that program is go slow to go fast. I think we've heard it before. But it's somewhat true, it somewhat rings true. And I really appreciate the understanding, because oftentimes, many of those 45 have come in from within the district. It's more than half, it's probably 60% or so, who are actually in the district and then take over. And oftentimes, one of the things, the pitfalls that they warn us about is, when you've been somewhere so long, people think that you're really up to speed. But this is a very different job, and I appreciate the fact, your support, and all that we work on together. So, just a couple highlights, you know, we talked about maintaining momentum within the transition. And I would say that, I think as a superintendent, lucky to have a team like this, and lucky to have teachers that go the extra mile, because it's really challenging, it's always challenging opening a new building. And without these folks here, without many others from central office, coaches and folks, to get that place up and running. And Mr. Mealy with the parking lot and getting those additional spaces, I think was super critical. But I was really excited, although it was a challenge, it's something that we worked through. And I think it could have been something that really slowed momentum, rather than more of a bump in the road.
So, like I asked the kids, did you learn more from the mistakes or the successes?
I will say that I just met with a team of about 14 yesterday, everyone from the town side, planners, Mr. Mealy, chief of police, on access to the Fields Project, and what that may look like, and what are some of the issues around schools and drop-off, pickup. There will be no stone unturned in that process.
Good.
I can guarantee you that.
We learned a lot more from the mistakes.
Hundred percent, which you typically do. You know, the other piece is, you know, the effective entry and direction setting. I think it was interesting, because meeting with over 1,100 people, I put in there, you know, certainly as part of this new program that I'm in, the new superintendent school, typically, you develop these things much later, typically in your second year. But it was nice to put in the language, if applicable, to affect the budget this year. And adding that position at the high school was a result of all the input taken from the folks, so I appreciated that. And I think it's an opportunity to go slow to go fast. You know, I think going into next year, we have a lot more work to do this year, but I'd like to bring a plan, you know, that gets us into next year and on the right trajectory. But I'd also like some time in the summertime with our leadership team, our retreat going into the fall, to really build it out even more, because I'd hate to rush it. And, you know, that's pretty much the advice with a lot of places. I'm way ahead of a lot of superintendents coming from within the district, you know, they're just starting to present their findings and some of the other things. So, they're not even talking about a strategic plan yet. So, we're really in a place of strength there. The new program's been terrific, 45 new folks, my coach is tremendous, really pushing me to think differently.
How often do you use your coach?
So, I actually have to go to Marlboro, basically about once a month, maybe it's 12 sessions. My coach and I meet in person in North Andover two times a month. And then we talk on the phone between a half an hour and three hours, probably four to five times a month. So, he's scheduled into my calendar. And what I like about Matt is that he is, you know, he's not from the Merrimack Valley, in the sense of, you know, he comes from a very different perspective on something, so he really challenges some ideas, get me to think about doing things differently. Just like with the, some of the restructuring and things we're looking at, we're looking for, you know, not the traditional narrow scope of those roles, but what are people's strengths, and how do we put them there? So, he's been great.
So, you go to Marlboro for the cohort, or to meet with him?
No, Marlboro is strictly where the 45 new supers, and we have a Merrimack Valley table, Haverhill, Lawrence, Methuen, North Andover, Wilmington joins us, and Wakefield's typically with us as well. So, that's been terrific. The fair and effective classroom evaluation, I just want to say, besides, you know, doing the, completing all the requirements, the traditional stuff, one thing that we've been working on this year that's really been meaningful is role-playing and practicing difficult conversations with a protocol where we have, you know, we have the administrator, we have the teacher, or whoever they're evaluating, and then we have an observer, and then we have a dilemma. Or we have things that typically come up. And I would say that that's probably, the feedback has been, it's one of the most meaningful things we've done in a while, because, you know, besides the boxes, it's not about always the boxes checking off. And remember, we used to submit everything by computer, and now we're doing these face-to-face things. Where improvement is, is when you can get face-to-face, you know, and stick to a plan, and provide constructive feedback. And it takes a lot of practice, because human nature is, if you, you know, hear something constructive, most folks, you know, get defensive, and it's like flight or fight. You know, so we work really hard on, you know, and after that, no one hears anything, because they're only in their mind thinking like, where are Matt? So, we've worked really hard on different practicing, but then the different strategies that go along with, you know, assessing where that person may be, saying, you know, can we pick this up in another day? Give them a chance to think about it and come back. So, I really appreciate, the team's been great in helping with that. And then, last but not least, just the visibility. I mean, I'm in schools just about every day, almost all the time, different activities, different events. I know there's a log there. But I was really excited, just with the, you know, under the visibility, is, I've been getting out a lot and trying to develop some of these new partnerships. I know you saw the DCF folks come in, and I know that you saw, I don't know if you know, the DCF, Ms. Fitzgerald came to the PTO president's meeting to present because of the lack of foster students, foster care in North Andover. And interestingly enough, we just had someone who does it, but hadn't in a little bit, and possibly picking someone up next week. So, I thought that was great.
Well, having attended that, because I participate in that monthly meeting, it was really great to make people aware of that need, and the fact that a lot of our local towns don't have a lot of options. And, but we still have students in need of foster care here in North Andover, people don't realize that. So, that was valuable, I thought.
The other thing is, you know, with Lawrence, I think Lawrence is probably the 20th poorest city at the time in the United States, and number one in Massachusetts. The amount of nonprofits there, people often think it's just for Lawrence. But there's a lot of services that come out to Methuen, Andover, North Andover, Haverhill. Haverhill kind of trends in their own way. But we're in the process right now with partnering with Family Services of Lawrence to participate, and that group providing PD for our administrative staff, just around mental health, well-being, from real experts in the field. So, I'm waiting to hear on it, but we're pretty excited. I think the more that I can continue, we can continue to partner with groups like that, continue to partner with Cynthia Parish Jeffers, now that Jeff has gone, Riley, so the commissioner, and really connecting with the other groups, I think, is critical. And just the other night, we went up to Salisbury Police Station. No, Paul, we weren't in trouble.
[laughing]
But we had the opportunity to collaborate, you know, for advocacy, and I know all of you have been doing it. And we're going to get to a little bit more tonight.
Right.
But it was really nice to be able to, you know, get out and connect with other folks and advocate with our new state senator around the issues that affect North Andover. So, and that's that.
So, there's a lot of information in here, and this is pretty comprehensive, thank you for that. Does anybody have any questions about anything in the packet specifically?
Appreciate seeing all of it, thank you.
Yeah.
Keep looking at me like I'm supposed to have a question.
No.
Very well put together, very helpful. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's great.
All right, excellent. All right, now we're on to our first reading of the proposed foundation budget resolution.
So, just a little background history. The Mass Association of School Superintendents and the MTA, along with everyone else, has been pushing for the foundation budget review, commissions, recommendations over time. It's complex in the sense of, I think, our former representative, Mr. Turisi, explained, you know, right now, the House is working on a bill, and the Senate's also working on a bill around funding, you know, and it seems like the time won't time up in terms of that bill, according to our former representative at the last meeting or two ago. And we'll be with the governor's recommendations, which are over time. But as you can see in the packet, the following districts across the Commonwealth have signed similar resolutions, just advocating for equitable funding for students in Massachusetts, so that over time, whether it's, you know, the House and the Senate are talking about three, four, five years, the governor said six or seven in his press release, to push for more. I do want to make really clear that there's a link in here where it says, whereas
Right.
here, for additional state aid, your district would receive. Now, that, to my understanding, is based on information of what would be underfunded. You know, the recommendations are very much so different, and the different language affects that, you know, but the state has that. I mean, this number particularly has it around like, just roughly $2 million.
Right, so that's when you click, that's what you see for us.
Yeah. And you can click on any town, it's a map of all of the Commonwealth. But I want to make it really clear, there's no expectation that we're even getting near that with the current. You know, I think that's what it would look like if the foundation budget was fully funded, is what that would look like, on North Andover. And as you see, it's very similar in a lot of communities with that much money.
And that's what this resolution is asking for, is fully funding it?
Mm-hmm.
Beginning this year, this budget. But as David said, it's not going to happen.
Do you know who wrote this?
This was a combination, this particular one was a combination in collaboration with the MTA.
MTA?
Yeah.
Well, just my two cents, we're not going to vote on this, right?
Right.
No. We're not going to amend it, this is just, we're putting a name onto something, is that correct?
Certainly, after the first read, you can make recommendations to amend, right?
Well, obviously, we can do something, but they're asking us, we've been asked to do this, and they just want to, they want to put another name onto this so they can write to the legislature and say, these are, so I don't think they want us to edit it. Because I think there's some things that, you know, I don't, so I'd probably vote against this as it currently sits up, because I don't want more money. But, you know, as a legislator, former legislator, I'd be kind of offended by, you know, the second to last paragraph, you know. And I also know May 1st, 2019 is not remotely realistic, considering the Senate won't do their budget till the end of, end of May. So, I think it's kind of, and just to be quite frank about it, it'll probably have little to no effect on the negotiation up there. I think everyone knows education is a big issue, the governor come out strongly about it, that, you know, the Senate president, you know, it was a big deal that she got a new Senate chair in there, because she wants a deal done this year. So, I think, you know, I don't think it hurts to vote for it, but at the same time, it just, as someone who was there before, I probably wouldn't vote for this. So, I'll vote for you next time anyway, so.
David, we're certainly amenable to some slight language change, if you'd like. I would just say that, you know, as superintendents, we've been putting our, making our voice heard, and the union approached me, because they, you know, they're getting support in all these other districts, just around, I think it's more symbolic, as you mentioned.
Yeah, but the problem is with the MTA, they're pushing for more money, but they don't want the accommodating, you know, accompanying educational standards either. So, there's, I mean, there's trade-offs. I think that if they're going to give us more money, you know, it's a negotiation. So, I have every confidence that, you know, Christina and Trom and Bruce and Diana are going to do, they're going to fight for everything for North Andover, I have no illusions about that. I just don't think it's just about more money, so.
I would agree. And that's the talk we had the other night up in Salisbury. Money without a plan isn't well-spent, and without accountability.
Any other questions or comments?
Just related to, I think Ms. Picard asked this last time, like, what should we be doing to, I mean, it sounds like one thing Mr. Turisi says, nothing we say is going to really make it...
No, I don't mean to...
No, no, but...
They know, I'm just saying, I'm just saying, they know.
Of course they know.
They want to get this done.
Is there anything, A, we should be doing, or B, that our citizens and families should be doing, or writing, or requesting, or anything we should be planning out to help make this more viable?
I just say, this is, you know, the metaphors, you know, you're squeezing a balloon. When you want more money here, it takes away from there.
Right.
They're trying to do this whole harmless thing that, which really means just dump a lot more money into it. You know, I read today in State Service, you know, the rural districts are up there, they had a big rural district caucus, and they're losing population on the rural part, and they're getting killed by the former, because they're losing, they're losing population. So, you know, if everybody wants more money, and everybody does want more money, you know, something's got to give. And, you know, you read the newspapers every day, tax revenues are down, the MBTA's falling apart. Our legislators have tough choices up there. And I think, the only reason I'm saying, you know, as someone who was there for many years, it's a tough, it's a tough job trying to figure out where to put your priorities, because there's a limited amount of money. And just to say, give us more money, and that's it.
Well, that's why I think, do we need to be more specific about what we're asking?
Yeah, I think honestly, you know, I don't think...
If you give us full fund X, we will then do Y. I mean, is that what we need to be? I mean, we already have a plan, so I feel like we can say something more specific.
You know, I think that there's, the reason it's so tricky on Capitol Hill, or Beacon Hill, I should say, is, I was stuck in Washington last week, Beacon Hill, is because representations, there's different interests, you know, and the last thing I want to see is, you know, suburban, or, you know, mixed suburban and urban, and then the urban centers really have different competing interests, and different pieces of the recommendations that go in really impact where the money goes, based on whatever criteria they put makes a significant difference. So, I would just say that, you know, this is something that they had asked. So, what can we do, you know, to your point, Amy? I mean, one of our shared goals was advocacy.
Right.
You know, I've met with all of our reps, except Bruce Tar, and we just met again with Diana. You know, I'm working with the Merrimack Valley Superintendent's Group to really push for full funding of Circuit Breaker, you know. And the other night, we had a conversation, you know, what could we do? And, you know, and some of the superintendents had some big ideas that I think would take quite some time to happen in the Commonwealth, the change. But just simply around any type of reimbursement, around special education transportation.
Right.
Yeah.
That's what I'm saying, do we pick it specific?
So, it was 10%. But to your point, David, there's only $200 million more in the money for the schools right now in the governor's budget. It's only a 4.1% increase, and right now, it's more of the same, based on enrollment.
It is. Yeah. I mean, this is, the committee assignments just came out, like, a couple weeks ago, they're just really getting going. And unfortunately, just because the time crunch, I mean, the House Ways and Means Budget will go to print in like, three or four weeks. Like, that's how quickly things have got to happen. So, to see that kind of wholesale change in a short period of time is pretty unrealistic, you know. So, we shall see.
But what is the downside, if any, to signing?
Oh, I don't, I just, I, I don't, I think I prefaced it, that there's not, no real downside to it. I just said, as a former legislator, I wouldn't really care too much. I'd be more concerned, like, when we had, you know, having Christina here and Trom here, and obviously you guys have been talking to Diana, that stuff's way more important than this. And this is just symbolic, that's all this is. You know, it doesn't really matter. I think, I think my conversations, specifically with, you know, Representative Minakuchi, you know, focusing on the special ed, Circuit Breaker, and some other local stuff is key. I mean, I think that's a more, that's more gettable, getting that 68% to 72 or 74% I think that's a more, that's more gettable, getting that 68% to 72 or 74%, to me, that's more gettable in the near future, this is something that, you know, we've got to keep on harping on, but again, you're right, it doesn't, it doesn't hurt.
And I realize it was symbolic, but the, you know, the union asked if we could, something we could discuss when we put it on, and
Any other discussion? Okay, moving on to the first reading of the memorandum of understanding with Merrimack Striders.
Mr. Mealy.
Yep, so the Merrimack Striders have asked if they could partner with us in allowing them to use the high school track for their running, it would be one day a week, twice, once early in the morning and then in the evening, it would be on Tuesdays. I spoke with Chet, and we met with them, the Merrimack Striders, and our athletic director, and Steve Nugent, one of our track coaches, to work out and make sure that any concerns were addressed, there would be, it would be priority for high school sports always, and activity can still take place in the, inside of the track, on the field, so games or practices can still happen while they're running, and they, it would not preclude somebody else from coming in and using the track to run as well, they're encouraging people to run, so they wouldn't have an issue with that either, they just want to have, they know that they'll be able to use the track at those times. In return, they will donate $10,000 toward the track facility each year, so that, those funds would be used for maintenance, and for instance, they need to improve the jumping pit up there, so funds would be available this summer to do that, if this is approved. And this has been reviewed by our attorney Suzanne Egan, and she made a couple of suggestions which were incorporated, and that's what you see now, is the final result of that.
Sure.
So, Mr. Mealy, didn't, the previous agreement was using the middle school track, is that right?
Right, they had, originally, I think there were concerns when the high school track was built, people weren't sure what kind of activity was going to be taking place, and so the Merrimack Striders put some money into the middle school track, and they used that.
Mm-hmm.
Over the years, as it's come to, into disrepair, I think they even had stopped using before part of the track was removed, and it's not a full track any longer.
Yes.
But they had been using that for quite a few years as well.
Because I do know that the Thompson and Franklin schools, and I think most recently this past year, Atkinson joined, that they always do a fun run every year, and the Striders were part of, they put on, I think, three or four evenings of getting kids out and get moving to help them train for the fun run, and it just taught them stretching and stuff like that, so they were very instrumental in supporting running for our youth as well, as, certainly, they didn't charge us for that help and coaching through all that, but it was kind of part of their, I think, they felt like part of their use of our facility, they were happy to give that back, so, thought that was nice, and hopefully they would continue that as well.
Right.
Popular program.
So they have a similar, I'm sorry, Helen.
Same question, go ahead.
So they had a similar contract before, is that what you're saying?
They did not have a, not that I'm aware of.
I thought they did use in the middle school fields.
They may have had a, I think it was a one-time
Okay.
infusion of funds that they did back then, it wasn't an annual, that I'm aware of.
Okay, all right.
So, so my question is, so this is going to be twice a week, first of all, this is very generous if they're going to be able to do this, and they do qualify it a little bit.
Well, based on their fee's or five, fee's or five.
Yeah, fee's or five, right. But they're going to use it twice a week, one time in the morning from 5:00 to 7:00, and the second time from 6:00 to 8:00?
Correct.
Okay, I'm just, does that mean that they'll have like an organ, and I maybe don't know the answers, Jim, but are they going to have like an organized event there, or does that mean it's going to just be, you know, if two Striders show up, and they, they're just going to walk around the track and no one else can use the track at the time?
They just, they just are scheduled to meet together, how many ever show up, and do their running.
They do pickups and
But I guess, like, right now, obviously, a lot of people just, it seems they just go up there and they start walking or running and stuff like that, so if Merrimack Valley Strider shows up on a Tuesday night, and there's a three or four of them, I mean, are they kicking other people off the track, I mean, I'm just kind of, is there going to be a potential to be
They're not, no, they're not, and we've had that discussion, they're not kicking people off the track, like, a track, like I said, they encourage people to run, so they're just doing their running, they just don't want to have us give the track to some other group for that period of time, a non-school group for an event.
Uh-huh.
So it's just, the track will be available to them to run.
But it wouldn't exclude any non-members of the Striders
Exactly.
From using
From also running, right.
Or you could go up and fly your kite there with your kid.
Right, they just run around, yep.
And I know we have the youth track program, but I think that that typically ends by 6:00, I want to say it's, like, right after school until probably about 5:00, 5:30 or so, so
Right.
That was a little bit of a concern that I had as well, but
Right, and Steve Nugent was there, and he felt, very comfortable with this.
Can I ask a really stupid question, when I initially got the packet, was this MOA in there as well?
No, I went to
Yes.
Because when I first got it, I remember, there was the first page, and then, did I miss the other ones? Because I know I asked you and Gately questions, and they're obviously answered here, but I totally missed the MOA.
The link was there when I looked, but you probably looked
Okay, I wanted to click on to it, though, it was really weird, it didn't click right away, yet I really
Okay, maybe that was it, because I know I asked you questions literally about the times, and they're clearly here, so, okay.
And this is just the track, not the field, like, they're not doing any pool vaulting, they're not doing anything that would cause a liability concern.
All they're doing is running. Just a track.
Just a track, ma'am.
And do we have any other agreements with any other organizations for any other use of any space that's ongoing like that, like the gym, or the wrestling room, or
Well, the tennis courts, we, we have had agreements in the past with Merrimack College.
Merrimack College.
But that was exclusive use.
Well, right, because they were, their teams were coming over.
Right.
So, yeah, it precluded anyone from else from using it at the time, I can't think of any others, so.
Everything else is in per form, that's given to Michelle McHugh.
Exactly, right, well, we do, for instance, there's a continuous use of Atkinson for, by a church group on Sundays.
Sunday mornings.
Right.
And that has a
That's right.
financial component similar to this?
Right, they're, they pay, as opposed to a donation.
Okay.
Right.
And we're not going to be, because obviously, it says here, they're only going to give the $10,000 if they have a net profit, we're not like auditing the books like that to find out if they're going to give us money.
No, and it's, it's a mutual
It's a kind of a good faith
Right, right, and it's a mutual, either one of us can decide we're ending it.
So, if they don't, if they say they can't pay, and then, there's, do they lose that exclusivity to it, I mean?
That would be what would happen.
Yeah, okay.
So, so this is great, I'm definitely in favor of it, the Fields Committee, obviously, will be putting in a new track at the, kind of where the middle school is.
Actually, they're not putting
They're not putting a track in?
There's not a track, no.
I thought there was a
There's a half-mile walking path, but there's not a track.
I thought they were doing a track there.
Nope, because this track is the track.
I might have an old diagram of that then, okay, all right, answered my question, thank you. All right.
So I had indicated to them that they should come to the meeting, but it made more sense for them to come to the second meeting than this one, so they will be here at the next meeting.
Okay.
Good.
Thank you.
Do you mean towns coming next time?
Correct.
Do some competition next time, Greg.
Well, my quarter-mile time has really improved with the shortened track at the middle school.
I know it's length of talking, that's why I'm
All right, first, first reading of the SEEM collaborative agreement.
I'm going to turn this over to Donna in a second to explain this, this is something we've been pursuing for some time, I would just wanted to make clear, this is something we had Suzanne, also Suzanne Egan, Town Council, and the Director of the Collaborative, Dr. Kathy Lawson, she's willing to come up to any of the meetings to explain anything, but I actually had to go interview to get us in, and I interviewed with the Finance Director of SEEM, the Director, and then the Superintendent of Lynnfield, Jane Tremblay, and the Superintendent of Winchester, Judy Evans, and so, we had the initial interview, and, you know, we got moved to the next round, and then they took it in front of the Board, and we were voted in. A little bit different than CREST, this is a board that they really would like the superintendent to attend the Board meetings, is part of it, but it's a really, a really good opportunity with the, just the communities involved, Lynnfield, Melrose, North Reading, Reading, Saguas, Stonem, Wakefield, Wilmington, Winchester, and Woburn, their main headquarters is literally Exit 46 right off there, you take a left into Stonem, and it's in an office bar, so, you know, I'll let Donna explain the benefits, because there are a ton, and this is her specialty, so, Dr. Straight?
Absolutely, so as you know, we're members of the CREST Collaborative, and they do a lot of services for us, we buy into that membership as well, and Helen attends the Board meetings, and it's been pretty functional, we have students who will sometimes go for 45-day extended evaluations to kind of help us understand better how to meet their needs, we utilize them, for some of our students are placed there because they are a public entity, so they're still considered a public school with least restrictive environment, so we have some students who will attend some sub-separate programs there, we also utilize them for job-alike groups, we use them for therapies, transportation, a lot of different areas, what we would get by joining SEEM, it being a second collaborative, is also some of those same opportunities, they also have sub-separate programs, some are the same as CREST has, some are different, why we would want to have the option of both is for some students, it doesn't necessarily work at, say, the CREST Collaborative or another school, and it's nice to have another public option, because that's always something that we want to do, is make sure our students are engaged in a public setting. They also provide other services that CREST doesn't provide, therapeutic-type services, board-certified behavior analyst services, home training services, lots of different types of professional development that we can utilize, they have transportation as well, so for those students who are going in a different direction than maybe the transportation that the CREST Collaborative has, we're able to work with those other communities under that collaborative for a better price for us, more opportunities for our students to be with other students and being transported, so it really provides us any number of different benefits, including job-alike groups as well in that particular area, so I highly recommend it, and the other big advantage is the fact that as members, and it's really short dollars, like $5,500, I think, for the year to become members.
That's the yearly subscription.
We get quite a good discount on the services that they provide us as members of the collaborative, whether it's, you know, having students attend their programs, the professional development that they have, the transportation, any of the types of services or therapies that they provide, so I highly recommend it as an option, they also have an excellent reputation and provide excellent services, we do have some students attending there now, we do utilize some of their services, so really, in the long run, it's a win-win for us, and we have another affiliation with another group of towns that we can work collaboratively with, so.
So, does this work similar to CREST where we pay by student, so if we have three students at CREST, we're paying whatever their yearly rate is, or monthly, however that works, same type
Right, but as a member, we have a discounted rate.
You get a little bit of a discount, okay.
Yep, exactly.
And so, let's say a student needed services that were also, that were provided both by SEM, am I saying that correctly?
SEEM.
SEEM, SEEM, and, and by CREST, would the family pick, would they, like, conce, like, how does that work, do they kind of try, like, spend a day and then figure out, like, this one works better, or is it us placing them in one of these two?
Yes and yes.
Okay.
So it really kind of depends, and it's really so individualized based on the needs of the student, based on the needs of the families, and the real specifics of what those programs have, so they may both, and they both have autism programs, but one really has a stronger emphasis or area in applied behavior analysis, or working with students who have significant behavioral issues, as opposed to maybe working with students who are older, who are higher functioning, who are looking for more vocational training, so we really kind of judge based on the very specifics of what those services are, sometimes we make decisions by understanding that there's one family attending this collaborative, so we're going to send this student to this collaborative, just because we know that that's not something that's going to be functional either on the bus ride, or, you know, so there's lots of thought that goes into that planning, if it's across the Board, and we're like, yeah, they could probably go to either one, the family always goes and interviews, they always do a tour, and, you know, then we engage in that conversation at the team meeting as to what we perceive as a team to be the better choice of the two, so.
And cost-wise, roughly the same as
I'd say they're roughly the same, yeah.
Okay, all right, obviously varies, I'm sure, by grade and all of that fun stuff.
And services, yeah.
Okay.
Yep, absolutely, it just provides us a lot more options as well, which, you know, are better options for our kids too, because again, they're in a public setting.
Does CREST offer a discount?
They do, as a member's district, they do.
So there would be no risk of us choosing one program over the other because of cost?
Absolutely none, it's a benefit across the Board.
So, so we've always kind of, I don't want to say partnered, but collaborated with CREST, and now with this one, are there others that are in the area that we should also be looking at, or are these kind of like, I've never even heard of this one before, so, you know, after this many years of being here, I don't think I knew that it was there, so.
Right, there are a number of, I think there's maybe 45 collaboratives, I believe, in the state, across the state.
Sure.
And we get into that area of transporting students.
Of course.
You can only transport students up to an hour and no more than that, and, you know, if you have to, there's legal ease things that we have to get involved in, so really, in looking at it, another collaborative that we use is the North Shore Consortium Collaborative, but for legal reasons and who they would or wouldn't accept, that wouldn't be an option for us, so, so these are the two that we really would want to look at.
And I think the benefit is, we've had students there now for some time, if my numbers are correct, I think we have four at CREST and three at SEEM this year, so, and I think that's pretty typical of what we've had.
Yeah, we use some of their services as well, so, yeah.
And some of the professional development, right?
Absolutely, yep.
Oh, right.
Professional development services, some of their transportation, some of their related services, speech and language, BCBA's.
And they don't accept all the towns that apply.
No.
One of the things that could happen in North Andover, for example, is if we had one room at the high school, when we used to host GLAC, you know, we could have a program there, you know, that would benefit our kids right in our community, that type of thing.
Oh, well, okay, so they wouldn't even be bused, right?
Correct.
Not out of town.
Not out of town, yeah.
Would we then also be more likely to accept, or would it be more common to accept students from these districts, for one of our programs?
And we would follow a very similar pattern to what the collaboratives or some of the private schools do, and we were just engaging, I think, this morning in that situation, and we follow an application process, an interview, and visit, and all of that as well.
Great, thank you.
Sure. Okay, do we have any public comment tonight? Okay, seeing none, does anybody have any final comments?
I'm not sure, I don't know if you would indulge us, but obviously, you've been appointed to the Town Manager Search Committee, I was wondering if you could give us, I'm just curious, I did not see the selectmen's meeting the last couple times they've met, I might maybe just give you a quick update without revealing too much of the inner secrets that go in of the search committee.
There's, there's no secrets, we haven't met yet. The selectmen voted to hire MRI, and I cannot tell you what that stands for, but if you watched the meeting that, that night
It's the first one?
It's the third group, no.
The third group.
The first group that they did hire, there was a conflict, so they withdrew after being appointed or being chosen, so they went with the third group, and the selectmen chair was meeting with them today to go over kind of an outline and a timeline, and how she want, how she envisioned the search committee being involved, so they're still working on that, but I believe meetings are supposed to start next week, and Mark Rogers will be the Chair of the Search Committee.
I think it's, first of all, kudos to you, but it's very, very unique that the Chair of the School Committee is on the search committee for the Town Manager position, so I think that, that's a credit to you, but it may just be helpful, you know, maybe in your chair's report going forward, if there's anything you could share with the committee, because obviously, we don't always see the selectmen's meetings on
Sure.
On the ads, so.
You don't tape those?
I do, actually.
No, you don't.
I do, I watch them, if I can't watch them, I tape them.
He does, but American Ninja Warrior gets taped all the time, so.
Bad time, bad time.
Any other comments? Mr. McKibben?
I don't think I have anything.
Ms. McCard?
I, I would just say it was really fun to be at Franklin's
I would just say it was really fun to be at Franklin School, was it yesterday, the day before?
Yeah, yesterday.
For Read Across America, most of the people at the table here were there, the Chief of Police, it was just like we needed a designated survivor, it was really a cast of thousands. Dr. Gilligan posted that on his Twitter account, so it was really, it was a really good time, it was a really well-run program, and I got invited back to do some word problems with math and celebrate math, so I hope I'll get to do that, too.
Ski team update?
Well, yes, I was sad to miss my, actually, that Franklin Read Across America Day is one of my faves, but I had the pleasure of going to Wa- Waatch Uset to watch the state ski championship, and it was one degree when we started. Morning, and it was a long day, but it was very exciting to see students from across the state competing on a much bigger. She did well, it was her, she, she, her goal was to make it, and she did, and she was ranked 102nd out of 123, and she came in 80th, so.
That's great. Beat the spread.
It was, it was really great, there were three girls, so because there were three girls who made it for our team, they represented as a team as well, and then there was one